I will recess the commissioners' meeting and reconvene our salary board meeting. Okay. Called by the salary board, reconvene the meeting of the salary board from May 18th. Are there any guests concerning salary board business? Hearing none, we'll move on.
Purchasing department, change the rate-
Wait one second, Hops. Report of executive sessions, there was one held on May 18th, 2023 at 1:00 P.M.
Purchasing department, change the rate of one purchasing manager from sixteen dollars and eighty cents per hour, grade S two, step A, to twenty dollars and forty cents per hour, grade S two, step I, effective June 5th, 2023.
Move to approve.
A second.
Mr. Spurcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Arner?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nozai.
Yes.
Okay. No further business for the salary board, meeting adjourned until next week. Well, it'll be our monthly meeting, okay?
Personnel report for the county departments.
Move to approve.
And I'll second that, but I do want to make a comment. We did hire a new person, and I think everybody sees that, but I think maybe I'll pick on that person next meeting once they're here. But we do have a new HR director that is Samantha Gialella that's sitting in the back of the room, and I think she's going to bring some good ideas to us. We're looking for the young people, so anybody that's looking for a job, send an application to her because she's in charge of the applications. So I'm hoping after the meeting that maybe the Times News or either the Channel 13 can sort of like ask her some questions, what her future is looking like for the county. How's that? See, I always got to pick on this too. I had somebody already. So, well, thank you for, you know, coming here and congratulations on your position.
Nothing like putting her on the-
I tried doing that once, and see how they handle pressure. She's all right with pressure, I see now.
Mr. Arner?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasowicz?
Yes.
Mr. Nozai?
Yes.
Acknowledgements for the courts and row offices.
Motion acknowledged.
Second.
Discussion. There's a leave of absence listed there, the justification for granting a leave of absence.
Not too sure if that would ask. If it's even anything to do with HIPAA or anything, or FMLA, I guess would, but.
Does the courts want to provide any insight into the leave of absence? It doesn't, I don't see anything. Any take reason for leave on a patch sheet?
I'll be glad to address the issue if you'd like. This was discussed at the executive session that was held this past week. Unfortunately, two commissioners were unable to attend, and therefore, no one was discussed. Angela Lim is a court stenographer. She was hired by the court not quite two years ago. She came from Luzerne County. She was the least stenographer in Luzerne County. I believe was making, in the vicinity, ninety thousand a year. She came here, we were glad to get her, we were fortunate to get her. She comes out of Kingston. She's exploring another job opportunity up there, and she asked if she could grant a leave of absence. We reviewed the leave of absence policy for the county, and it indicates that a leave of absence can be granted for personal reasons. I discussed that at the executive session, and I've advised that that was within my authority, and I would have the right to grant a leave of absence. So I've come here to have a leave of absence. The only thing that's on the agenda, as I understand it, is the acknowledgement by the commissioners that a leave of absence is granted. There's been force discretion up until that executive session, and that's what the question is for.
So if I understand correctly, a leave of absence is given so an individual can go test the waters of another employment opportunity?
It includes that, but I think you're being short-sighted and not seeing the big picture. The big picture is unfortunately, court stenographers are in very short supply. It's very difficult to get them. As I've indicated, we were fortunate to get Angela. I believe that if she does not grant a leave of absence, and if she does not like what she's considering up in Luzerne County, she will not return here because the past practice of this county has been, if they resign and they come back, they start from square one. They lose all benefits, they cannot return to the salary they had, and she wants to avoid that from occurring. In the past, when we lost court stenographers, it has taken at times up to a year, perhaps more, to get another court stenographer. The expense of that to the county unfortunately is probably more than having an employee remain as a court stenographer. The only detriment to the county through this is that it delays my posting by about thirty-five days, forty-five days. So to me, it's a good thing for the court and hopefully the commissioners to encourage a leave of absence under these circumstances. This is not a position that can easily be filled if we lose her.
And I would say, Judge Navek, it does unfortunately though also start a precedence that other row officers who have, who indicate they have sixteen, twenty authorities will start doing similar actions to the detriment in the long term, right? Having that vision that I have, seeing the issues that this is going to create by acknowledging this. I think we're doing a detriment to the best practices, hiring, firing, and managing personnel. We're opening Pandora's box by the Board of Commissioners acknowledging this.
Except that I believe that most people who look at things, the decisions should be made on a case-by-case basis.
Sure, I agree.
There should not be a cross-award policy that says, under those circumstances, can we allow this to happen?
Yeah.
There are mitigating and justifying circumstances to permit this in this instance. And that's why I considered it. I discussed it at the meeting we had last week. I think it's justified, I think it's appropriate. Ultimately, I think it's in the benefit of the county. I don't know if she's going to return. I hope she will return, but I don't know this well.
Thanks for your explanation, appreciate it.
I would add that we're working in extreme times in the retention and in getting good, qualified employees, and I think we have to take every avenue that we have to try to retain a lot of our employees. We have already lost how many employees this year? And not all it's the funds or the money. A lot of it is the way they have been treated by someone here in this office. We have at least four people that have left because of what is going on. I think we really have to step back and really look at what we are doing to our employees. We're at an all-time low. I think, look what we did already today at the salary board meeting, giving somebody twenty forty-seven an hour with no experience, when this board refused to give that to any or the existing employee at the time who did have experience. So then we wonder why we have so many people leaving. We have, what, at least five, six department heads that have left because of the way they were treated, being treated unfairly by the salary board, by the commissioners, and we have got to turn the tables on the exodus of our employees.
Jen, could you look back at the minutes and tell me how Commissioner Nozai voted in regards to the purchasing director? Was that a nay or a yea?
Apparently.
How did he vote?
The one just now.
Yes, the one we just did. Was it, he voted yes, all right.
Well, exactly, and I understand, and I was the one that submitted a higher, an increase for that purchasing director, and you voted no in the January meeting. So I want to hear how, I agreed that the salary should have been up there. I made that motion in January, and you voted no, so.
You made a motion contrary to the salary study recommendations, which a majority of the commissioners felt was best to be adopted in its entirety, and you were against that.
I mean, point something out in the summary of the salary study. The objectives of the study were to attract and retain qualified employees. Attract.
I see individuals who we have hired to replace individuals who departed as highly qualified. One sits in front of us, one we just have set a salary for today. We have an election director who has done an incredible job after just sixty-three days on a job running a primary election. So I think we've done very well attracting and hiring highly qualified individuals.
I think we could do a lot better.
Well, I think then that's disrespectful to this individual sitting in front of us, to the individual who is just in front of the salary board for a salary, the election director. And I don't think we can do better. And I'm very fortunate to have those individuals.
We can certainly do better in the way we treat our employees and be more fair.
Mr. Arner?
Yes.
Mr. Lukasowicz?
Yes, with the exception of the appointment of the peace officer, law enforcement officer, and juvenile probation due to the court's consistent non-compliance with Act 57 of 2020 that serves to protect the citizenry from hiring practices of law enforcement agencies that could place policing authorities in the hands of those with a history of misconduct and place their employee, the county of Carbon, and its taxpayers in a position of liability. Two county solicitors and the commissioners' labor council have agreed in their opinions that the courts are not exempt from compliance with Act 57. The court has made no gesture to defend the county in any lawsuit that could be brought forth as a result of non-compliance, nor has it sought the recommended declaratory judgment action to recognize and allege court authority to unilaterally determine its necessity to comply with Act 57. I find it morally reprehensible for the court not to act in the best interest of the citizens of Carbon County, and in this case, they are clearly not.
Mr. Nozai.
Yes.
Court positions for approval. Authorize the Human Resources Department to process payment to the employees under the jurisdiction of the courts for those positions which were in question due to funding. Payment shall go through the regular payroll process at the rates approved at this annual salary board meeting of January 3, 2023, and retroactive to January 1, 2023.
I'll make that motion with discussion.
Second.
All right. I think our solicitor gave us a little bit of an update on what the laws are, and I think for myself, I disagree with some of this. And the motion that was passed at the annual salary board were for increases that were above the commissioner's proposed rate of the 2023 budget. The commissioner's proposed rates represented at the annual salary board, and an appeal process would be set up in a few months to update job descriptions with possible outcome of pay increase if justified. The process was not used by the courts. Some of the other, most of them went through the process and okayed the proposal, but the courts did not do that, and the rate for court employees was held at the 2022 rate, not even giving the non-contested positions a chance for an increase. Currently, there is money in the budget, but to my understanding, it's due to vacant positions. Now, what's going to happen when their current vacant positions are filled? For example, four positions at forty thousand dollars is an increase of this budget of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. If this ripples across the county, just say fifteen, and we have more than fifteen positions that are vacant, fifteen positions at fifteen dollars an hour, eighteen hundred and twenty dollars, or eighteen hundred hours a year, that's four hundred and nine thousand, five hundred dollars. That will force us into a tax increase. I know there's some people that want to do tax increases, but I don't think we have to just on an issue like this. And I've been an advocate for the salaries all this time. I never said that anybody didn't deserve a raise, it didn't matter if they were making eleven dollars or forty dollars an hour. I never said that. But the way that this is going to get straightened out, this system has been in place in this county for thirty, forty years, and it's time to change. And the biggest thing that can be done to this county is redo these job descriptions and give the people the proper pay that they should. And, you know, I just look at this, now, we're looking at this, everybody always comes up here and they go, oh, the inflation is so high, and what are we going to do with our employees? Well, every week, somebody puts in that they want comp time, okay? I've been against comp time since I've been here. Any place I ever worked, or any of my friends ever worked, when you worked overtime, you got overtime or either the time you were compensated. Now, we're telling everybody that all of these people are so important, but we're giving them more time off. That's not giving them any more money in their budget. They're still making, if they're making thirty-six thousand dollars, they're still making thirty-six thousand dollars. If they would have, in fact, someone last week, I think they put in for five hours for five weeks, and we get this continues. Wouldn't that be nice if them people had them hours paid for, that they can buy that tomato that they're looking for, or that extra steak that they need? You know, I've never seen a system like this, and I didn't want to bring this up on how people are treated, and I've always tried to treat everybody fairly. It doesn't matter where I was throughout my life. You know, we've got a good person here, and now we're picking on people that were getting new in here. You know, the IT director didn't want to call me up because I advocated for him. He's a young person, and that's what we need, our young people to step up to the plate instead of putting them in when they're sixty years old at a position like this. You know, they have to step up. And, you know, he was denied overtime when he came in. He put all these times in, but the last director that was there, probably for eighteen months, got overtime. And then we're looking at it, where are we not treating our people right? We've been doing it, I see that, and I want these people to get overtime. And why is this in here? We're contesting over this money that's in the budget for people that aren't even here that, and like I said, is this the way the budget was padded? To make it look like we're doing a good job, you know, that we always have money to rely on? You know, but I just don't see it. This, this money that's in this budget, that to me, that was, that's there for these vacant positions. If we got people coming in and they're working overtime, they should be paid for it. There's no other place in the world that I think, that you come in and, and like I said, everybody that comes in here, every department, their employees are so important, they need a, they want to give them more money, but we sit here and give them more time off. So that means we don't need them. You're giving them more time off, does that mean we don't need them? You know, now we've got vacant positions, like I said, that people are coming in to cover for the vacant positions, and we're not paying the people. But we sit here every week and say, boy, the inflation is really bad. But that's where we mistreat our people. And like I said, our IT director, when I went to a seminar with him, he was asked by Homeland Security to work for them, and he gave that job up, I mean, that was a couple months ago. He gave that job to come here, and he was here for one month, and we denied him overtime. We are abusing our people. We've got to start helping the people out a little bit better and pay them for the time that they're here. But, I mean, and like I said, this thing with this salary motion, you can stand on that all they want, but what is going to be the projected thing for when these, when this money is given to the other employees? What are we going to run into next year's budget? I, I don't know. Like I said, I'm projecting here, I look at four hundred and nine thousand dollars already, just for that. So where are we going here? And, and I don't know, is it back, should we get rid of some of these positions? And that would help, and you know what? In our office here alone, now, we had a process, one of our employees retired, so they moved up, and it, and the next one moved up, and it kept going like that. Within our budget here, I think I have it on, I think it was like eighty-nine thousand, or eighty-nine hundred dollars we saved in our budget. Colleen retired, Lisa moved up, I think we've saved eighty-nine hundred dollars on three people. That isn't our money, it's the taxpayers' money, and that goes back into the pot for next year to give raises. Like, everybody comes in here and they think everything is their money. It's not. It's the local taxpayer that's paying for it, and I think when we do this stuff, we're abusing it. We're abusing it just by this one little thing where we're not paying these people on just comp time alone. How many people come in here, like I said, that could buy that tomato? Or maybe if they're going to get fifty dollars extra a week, that they can pay for their gas to get to work? We're not even giving them compensation to get here. And it's plain and simple, that's it. So I think everybody can come in and argue over this, over this motion, but this is not right. That's, that's my stance on it. And, and you can sit here, Wayne, and talk about it for a hundred years. This has been going on for twenty years, and now I'm the bad guy that wants to get people wages. So you just keep on your campaign and do what you got to do.
I would agree one hundred percent on the comp time, except for a few hours because it's carried away, and eventually those people have to take off. But I remind you, you keep saying about the budget and what was in the budget was the, were the funds for the purchasing director in there for that 2057, and I agree that person needs it, as most of the IT people, I agree one hundred percent. And that IT person didn't lonely leave because of the money, they were treated the way they were attacked at a meeting, so.
Well, I can guarantee you, I never attacked anybody.
No, I didn't say it was you. I didn't say it was you.
I don't attack anybody, and you know, that person, if they would have hung around, they came to other people. I was the one that was working on the salaries, and they came to somebody else, and if they would have listened to me, in fact, even liked the election director. The election director might have been here too, but they went to somebody else besides me.
And you're saying that we could have probably straightened it out come January 1?
And that was my suggestion. That was when we were having all these meetings about these salaries. Nothing ever happened from October, November, and December.
So, I would, well, to begin with, the, those people leaving, yeah, I would have liked to seen them stay as well, but to turn around and pay other new people is a lot more money. Was that money put in the budget for that higher increase in purchasing?
And I go back to it again, I don't know if anybody knows how the salary works. You get money through attrition, and when people do retire, we want the people to have a good life to retire. And like I said, just in our department alone, we saved eighty-nine hundred dollars that this money is, that person, whatever this person in the next department is moving up or getting, that we can use that money, but like I said, everybody thinks that's their money in that department. I don't look at it. I think these girls here got a decent raise, they moved up, and it's the first day of their job, and we had confidence in them. I mean, if we, when Lisa moved up, if we didn't have confidence in her, I mean, I work with her every day. You know, if somebody would have came in here and said, well, we want somebody else besides Lisa, they would have had a battle with me because I work with her every day, I see her, and that's how you treat people. You don't treat new people and then abuse them.
But if you go back to the budget, Mr. Arner?
Yeah.
You know, look at what we increased again today, just our insurance costs for this one item, sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars. And we gave you, we set aside eight hundred thousand dollars towards salaries, but what did we do to compensate or decrease that deficit in the county budget? We have been operating at a deficit for three years. If you want it, fine, I agree one hundred percent. Those people at the lower end definitely deserved that salary. There's others at the top of the salary or the management level that should be more, maybe some are overpaid, I agree with that. But, you know, nothing was done to compensate for the increases of many things going back. How many things have gone up over the years, but yet, nothing was done to decrease the deficit of this county?
Well, this motion is an attempt to rob Peter, what, the funds for these vacancies to pay Paul, right? Without any concern for the impact on Peter, which in the future, and Commissioner Arner clearly stated, is the county taxpayer, right? And it's also our authority of the Board of Commissioners to set a budget and for taxation. And again, we saw this play out earlier, mid-last year, August, September timeframe in motions that were made. Nothing prohibits the courts from coming back in here next week and saying, I want to hire and fill those four vacancies. Nothing prohibits them from doing that. I have no faith that they won't do that. And to support this would just be providing them an opportunity to do that and put us in a position, as Commissioner Arner clearly stated, where one, the budget and taxes have a significant probability of increasing due to our actions in support of this. That's all I have.
Mr. Arner? There are a lot of issues and questions concerning the budget, concerning what the county has done by the salary study, concerning how the county has decided to implement that salary study. On December 8th of last year, this Board of Commissioners distributed to each rule office holder what the Board of Commissioners thought should be paid for each position in each office. That may be a suggestion that the Board of Commissioners does not have the legal authority to establish the number or the rate of salaries for any position. But that's apparently what the Board of Commissioners wanted to do at that release. I asked a question, and I was told by Commissioner Arner that those positions, those amounts that were handed out by this Board of Commissioners were fully funded in the budget going into 2023. I met with your financial consultant perhaps a month, month and a half ago, and he confirmed that those positions were fully funded. Not just that they were budgeted, but the monies were appropriated within that budget to pay those salaries for those positions one hundred percent. And that was a change of what the Commissioners had done apparently in past years, where they would fund at the earlier years' rate, whereas this year, they were going to fund at the 2023 rate as you guys estimated salary should be set. So we come to a salary board meeting, the annual salary board meeting on January 3rd, and myself in differentiation from the other department heads made motions one by one as to what I thought the positions for my staff should be set up. Ultimately, there were twenty-two positions that were different than what the Commissioners had handed out on their December 8th agenda. And those positions were voted on by the salary board and approved by a three-to-two vote. That's what the salary board set those salaries at. That's the way salaries are set in this county, under the county code. Two commissioners on this board said, we're not going to fund it. In essence, we really don't care what the salary board set these salaries at, we're not going to fund it. Okay? Commissioner Lukasowicz says, there's a case by the appellate court by the name of Kudu, and Kudu says the Commissioners fund, the salary board sets. I don't disagree with that law, but Kudu dealt with a different circumstance. Kudu dealt with a situation where it came out of Monroe County, where the salary board and the office holders were requesting and directing the county commissioners to take funds from some other area of the budget, not from salaries, from some other area. Not from salaries, from some other area. I don't recall what the other area was. And the appellate court said, the salary board is an administrative board. It is not a legislative authority. It does not have the authority or the ability to require the county commissioners to take from somewhere else in the budget and place it where the salary board thinks it should be. That's not what we're asking for here. This board not only passed the budget, they appropriated the funds to fully fund the budgets of the salaries we're talking about. We're not asking you to take anything from anywhere else other than we're saying you should apply the funds that you budgeted and appropriated for salary purposes to salaries. Now, I've met in addition with Mr. Weiss, who has confirmed, I believe, again, at the meeting last week, that two commissioners were unable to attend, that due to the vacancies in the positions, due to the people who have left, who were at higher paid salaries and left, in part unfortunately because county commissioners would not recognize their value and give them some additional compensation, there have been savings in the budget. My court administrator has computed those savings at close to one hundred and four, five thousand dollars for salaries alone. I'm not sure what Mr. Weiss said the savings were. But the cost of what we're talking about, I'm not talking a hundreds of thousands of dollars like Mr. Arner seems to be throwing around. The cost for these twenty two positions to pay them at the rate that the salary board approved is twenty five thousand five hundred fourteen dollars and sixty cents. That's on average, slightly more than a thousand dollars a position. A number of these positions under what the commissioners handed out on December eighth were getting nothing, not a single cent for an increase in two thousand twenty three. Some of these people have sat in office and been in those offices for twenty, twenty-five, thirty years. And this board said, the fair thing to do in light of inflation, nine percent, is to give these people nothing. Is that the right thing to do? I don't think it is. Apparently, two commissioners think it is. So we know the salary board has approved it. We know the monies are already in the budget to pay salaries. And again, the excess savings already is far in excess of the twenty five thousand dollars. My current understanding of the law is that, once it's budgeted, once it's been appropriated, the court has the right to require that it be used for those salary purposes. I've discussed the issue with your solicitor. I believe, and I know how to speak for himself, that he agrees with that. I know that Commissioner Arner said, we've spoken with your solicitor. I don't know what advice he gave you that's between you and him. But I believe not only are the funds are there, the law says it should be used for these purposes. It's not gonna cost the county one cent. Even if we would fill these other positions that were vacant today, which is not gonna happen, because they don't even have the people who are willing to apply for them, given the salaries that were set. Even if we do it, people who are filled today are not gonna be given a retroactive pay for time they weren't even here. Those savings are there for the year. They cannot be lost. They cannot be dissipated. They are there. So if the money is there, if the law says it should be used for these purposes, I guess if this motion is voted down, we have two commissioners or perhaps more, who are gonna say, we don't care what the law says. We don't care what our attorney advises us. We're gonna vote against it. Now, is that the right thing to do? I think disrespect for the law and disrespect for what the law requires says a lot about the people who wants to vote against that. So all I'm asking is that you do the right thing. You follow the law. You pay people some fair compensation that was approved by the salary board, and let's get it behind us. We're not talking hundreds of thousands of dollars. We're talking, like I said, twenty five thousand five hundred fourteen dollars and sixty cents for twenty two employees. Of those twenty two employees, six have already left. Why? Look at the salaries you set, and maybe they'll tell you what's going on. And I think this county needs to wake up and do the fair thing for important. Richard's, our partner said, we wanna respect our employees. We wanna do the right thing. Let's do the right thing for twenty two employees who do neglect them. Let's do the right thing. Thank you.
Okay. And and I'll respond to that too. I think our, what this salary study was, and I don't think I asked for it. I mean, I sort of did my own salary study. But when I look at this, the way that the money is distributed, you know, I think it was to uh, not have disparity between the lowest salaries and the upper salary. And I look on this here. This person here is gonna get three dollars and thirty six cents under this proposal. And then I look further down the line, this person gets thirty eight cents. So where is this being fair to any of your employees and that are in the courts? When I see this, when I seen people that all the way through the salary scale, even if they're, in fact, I think even one of yours in the courts, the the proposal that we gave or what we sat down with, I think the one position that you said asked for eighteen ninety nine for that one where uh, we had a little discussion for a couple of weeks, that one actually got twenty two cents more. I think the IT person in the office was, did that person go from fifteen forty two of an increase of two dollars? So you can't say that we're not looking out for people. But again, I go back to it. And the thing was, people aren't getting paid or being paid fairly. And right here, I look at it again. The top person is getting three dollars and thirty six cents, and the ones down at the bottom are getting thirty eight cents. So who's being fair or not fair? You know, if you wanna distribute money, then distribute it money evenly. Because the secretary down at the bottom works just as hard as the administrator at the top. You know, and and that's my point. And and we have, like I said, we have four hundred employees to take care of. And if if and that was the process that this was gonna be. Now, this process, if it's not accepted, and I said, I didn't ask for this. Now, all of a sudden, now, is our appeal process? Is anybody gonna appeal anything, or is there anything in the works for any of these positions to be appealed? I mean, I'm looking at this. I know the court had asked for an extension, and we denied it. But what's gonna hap- and and we're not denying anybody coming back and appeal, even if it was after, you know, after this. You come back and you have justification. But I said again, I look at it, the the main objective that we were looking at was to have a fair wage throughout the whole salary scale. And it's the same thing, it's the same exact thing that was done for thirty years. And you know, and and I'm not breaking the law by being fair to people. If somebody would come in here and say, okay, everybody here is getting the same rates or whatever's going on, then that could be a discussion. But I still see three dollars and thirty six cents at the top, and I see thirty eight cents at the bottom. That's my point.
I guess we can selectively choose to apply this law, but not Act fifty seven, Judge. I'm sorry. I find that hypocritical for you.
Do you want me to respond to that?
Uh, no, because I'm just saying, you you've had your opportunity.
Not to respond to that, Attorney Commissioner, because you've done this time and time again, sir. Because the commissioner's done this time and time again. He brings up something about Act fifty seven.
Sure.
When the court is not given an opportunity to respond, and that seems to be his modus operandi. And I've said, if he wants me to respond to Act fifty seven, because I didn't discuss, I was trying to keep concentrated on the issue of his party. Now he wants to bring it up again. If you want me to respond, I'll respond. I said this repeatedly in public, and Commissioner Lucas Evans doesn't wanna hear it and doesn't wanna acknowledge it.
I don't acknowledge it because I disagree with your belief that you don't have to comply, Judge.
Has nothing to do with that, this decision or this vote here.
And I agree with that, but Commissioner Lucas Evans wants to bring it up. He wants to raise red herrings. It's improper. It's unfair. It's disrespectful.
No, it's not a red herring. You said we should apply the law and we should adhere to the law. It is a law. You were referencing a law. I don't see it as a red herring. It's analogous. It's similar. It's the same.
Mr. Donald, I am ready for the vote whenever they are.
I am.
I'm ready for the vote.
No further discussion?
No.
Okay. Mr. Arner?
No.
Mr. Lucas Evans?
No.
Mr. Gosseng.
Yes.
Well, let's go back to the salary stuff. I know at at the annual meeting, you guys had the proposed ones. Most of the, all actually, all the row offices, except the courts, had the the proposed that you guys did, had that accepted, and then the alterations. The courts did not. But why didn't you guys ever go back and take the ones that you had, the the sample that you gave the courts and bring it up to twenty twenty three instead of keeping it to twenty twenty two?
Why didn't we take unilateral action to make the motion?
Why didn't the salary board, why didn't, wasn't that ever rediscovered on that part? Bringing that J sample that you guys sent out to everybody?
The courts had the option to bring that up at every meeting, right? So if it wasn't brought up as a motion to the salary board, right? I mean, our our initial recommendation was to accept, right? And then from there, build your other motions for additional increases.
So the initial one was just never brought up again too, do you guys?
I don't recall it ever being brought up in a salary board.
Thank you. And then with regards to all that discussion, you guys talked about employees leaving. Do you know how many employees have less left since the beginning of the year?
Um, I don't know, but I think Samantha might be able to answer, but I think I asked you the other day, there was actually five employees that came back to the county. Uh, within the last, I think there was, I think I have a list in there, was the sheriff's department got some back.
Two and a half.
There was five of them that came back. So and I said, I I I think when some people leave, they don't realize what we offer. I mean, this benefit package, and I think Mark can even attest to like our pension. Like, our pension is tremendous. I mean, it's like when everybody was losing money, we lost a little bit, we gained. I mean, we were at like eighty eighty thousand, I think, or eighty million when I came in here. And I think it it was down to like ninety something. So we're we're pretty good on the benefit package. And I said, some of these things, we're not asking people for more co-pay. I mean, we haven't done that for a while. And it's like, I think some people see that, and it's probably with the gas prices. I mean, you're you're paying a hundred dollars to drive to Allentown, and you're going down there for two dollars. It just doesn't work out. And I said, I still feel our county is a great county to work in. And I think the county has a bright future with everything that's going on within the county, and I think hopefully all these people will come back.
Amy, I I would say you do a disservice if you're just gonna try to look at one year of number of people. You have to go back and do the research. All the agendas that include the personnel reports are online. You can go back and count number of people left, number of people who came. Hopefully, in the near future, we'll have an HR platform that will allow us to do that instantaneously. I know that Sam is big into leveraging the technology. But right now, you know, unfortunately, you have to go out and, you know, basically go through the agendas and count departures and arrivals.
And speaking of Samantha, was she on last week's personal report? Because I don't remember seeing her.
Was it two weeks ago?
Yeah.
Two or three.
Yeah, two or three.
Okay.
Yes, two or three.
Yeah, I couldn't re- I I'm like, I don't remember seeing it all.
Yeah.
And I think that's it. Thank you.
Uh, the BHA students helping out the senior center, is that something new or has that been going on?
I don't, I think they did some stuff with with other students, you know, at at the other schools. It's just something that might be mimicking what the other schools did. I don't think it's nothing new. Because even like at the senior games, they always have the stu-, you know, I mean, they have the students coming in.
First, we've done anything.
Yeah, yeah.
But other areas had.
Yeah, it's it's just something that's, you know, it was an idea that was just brought to us that that other ones were doing.
Do you know what they would be doing at all, or?
Um, I don't, I don't know. You'd have to ask the director. Yeah, I mean, I mean, they do their regular, they have darts and pool and, I don't know, maybe the kids know how to do cornhole. And that's what they wanna for for a a license. I don't know.